May I have a good evening to all my visitors in this session hall. We have the members of the City of Mati United Vendors Association. Ma'am sir, may I have a good evening. Welcome to our regular session. Now, I would like to introduce Mati Baywok Toda. Madre, Mati Baywok Toda represented by Ma'am Miradel. So, the 17th regular session of the 8th City Council for the year 2025 is now called to order. Please rise for the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Bardon, followed by the National Anthem, Provincial Hymn, and City Hymn. And Counselor's Creed and Vice Mayor's Creed.
Let us bow our head and place ourselves in the presence of the Lord, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty and ever-living God, we gather before you today with humble and grateful hearts. Thank you for the gift of life, for your guidance and protection, and for granting us another opportunity to serve our people through this session. Lord, we lift you up. You are the belief. Our beloved city and all these people bless us with wisdom, our citizens with peace, and our community with unity and understanding. May your divine hand guide our discussions and decisions today. Grant us, oh Lord, the wisdom that comes from you alone as we deliberate on matters concerning peace, order, and the welfare of our constituents. May we do with almighty integrity, fairness, and compassion for those we serve. We trust this. We entrust this decision into your hands that all our actions and resolutions may bring honor to your name and lasting good to the people of Mati City. This we ask through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Lupang hinirang, dyan ka ng magiting sa manlulupig. Di ka pasisiin sa dagat at bundok sa simoy at sa langit mong bogaw. May dilag ang tula at awit sa paglayang minamahal. Ang kisslap ng watawat mo'y tagumpay na nagrihingning. Ang bituwing at araw niya, kailan pang may dimang didilim. Lupan ang araw ng walhatit pagsinta, buhay ay langit sa piling mo. Aming ligaya napag may mang-aapi ang hamatay ng dahil sa'yo. O probinsya na minamahal, sangsubangan ang dapaw. Batwa ka na madayaw, ya naguyon niyang utaw. Mali payon kay balanggakaw ng Diyos. Matabay ang kalupahan mo, yang tanuma bungaun. Dagat mo mga suba, madalikay ang hisda. Ka buhi ang kawilihan ang kanan. Umahan na dapaw oriental, langit mo mapawaay. Yangka butayan, yangka patagan, maya maday magandahay. Mas dihain pa kami kumakto, kami mo ulian ikan mo. Garbu namin na dapawenyo, yangka serbisang kajawan mo. O balanggakas, sugan mo ng maki, lagnaman mo di makati. Sangkat kayan, sangkat patagan, sangkat dagat at kaway kayuwan. Magkanap ya, manjeritay, kayang palipot na gandahan. Sangkat jawan ya, sangkukat, iya iyan ya ribahan. Tagamatin matinag darun, tagamatin matinag urun, ya tagamatin matinag. Tagamatin matinag darun, tagamatin matinag manun, tagamatin matinag urun. Sa Diyos labang, mahtag ang ahun. Tagamatin madayaw, tagamatin matinag.
For the Counselor's Creed, may request Honorable Dayang Hirang to lead the reading.
The Counselor's Creed, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am a Philippine counselor. Mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that redound to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service above self as the guiding principle of my official act. And as I tread the pathways of local legislation. May the Almighty guide my mind and heart that I shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
The Vice Mayor's Creed. I am a Vice Mayor and my covenant with my people is to devote myself to public service. By divine providence and by the will of the people, I am mandated to preside over the local legislature that with integrity and statesmanship, I shall lead the local legislature to enact measures and ordinances for the common good and fulfill my people's aspirations for happiness, peace, and prosperity. May the Almighty God help me consecrate myself for the people I am called to serve. Please be seated.
Mr. Secretary, may proceed to the roll call.
Honorable Edmond Lupang Jr., Honorable Rogelio Pabio, Honorable Sina Princess Campos, Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gaita, Honorable Jose Paulo Luis Rabat Oliv, Honorable Raol Antupuesto, Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang, Honorable Francisco Bardon Jr., Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara, Honorable Edgar Valera, Honorable Daniel Makaobos, Honorable Felicito Masagnay, Honorable Thomas Sebelino, Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girabat. Coro, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please proceed to the next item.
Reading and consideration of the previous minutes of the regular session dated October 21, 2025, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any corrections to their previous minutes? If they are not, Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, since there are no corrections to the previous minutes dated October 21, 2025, for the 16th regular session of the 8th City Council, I move for the adoption of the said minutes, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the adoption of her previous minutes dated October 21, 2025. Does any member second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Dayang Hirang. Hearing no objections or further discussions, the previous minutes are adopted. Please proceed to the next item.
For question, are no guests invited? Privilege or other reports of observations?
Thank you. Privilege or is upon us. Any reports, observations? Honorable Antupuesto.
Good afternoon, Mr. Representative Officer, my colleagues, and to our Esp. Secretary. This representation as Chairman of the Committee on Cooperative and Livelihood, I would like to request for consideration from this August body that the Communication Number 144-2025, letter from Mati Baywok Toda, and Communication Number 147-2025, letter from the City of Mati United Market Vendors Association Incorporated, requesting for the re-accreditation to be tackled under assigned business suspended house rules.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Antupuesto that Communications 144 and Communication 147 be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary. Probably noted, Mr. Chair.
Again, Mr. Chair, since these, our visitor invited guests as the officers of the applying for the re-accreditation, I proudly present to you to this August body, the officers and visitors who are applying for the re-accreditation and accreditation. May I call Bibberly Montin? Yes, from Kumuda. We have Binita Bacalzo. We have Ray Trinidad. We have Mari Del Jalges. And we have Phil Lumarda. Mr. Chair, this, our guests are the officers who applying for the re-accreditation and accreditation for the city. And our guests, as Chairman of the Committee on the Livelihood and Cooperative, we will assure you that your application for the re-accreditation and accreditation will be properly tackled in this honorable August body. And thank you for coming. That's all, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to have the photo opportunity now?
Yes.
A few minutes recess is declared. Ma'am sir, may we invite? Settle down. Session is resumed. We are still under privilege. Our Honorable Bardon, followed by Honorable Pabio, followed by Honorable Sebelino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to request this honorable August body that communication coming from the City Anti-Drug Abuse Council be discussed and tackled under an unassigned business suspended house rules. This pertains for a passage of a resolution to conduct the 4th Quarter Barangay Anti-Drug Abuse Council Workshop to enhance the capacity and coordination of BADA members in implementing anti-drug program. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Bardon that a proposed resolution endorsement from the CADA be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. Should there be no objections? Can it take note, Mr. Secretary? Probably noted, Mr. Chair. Honorable Pabio.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all. Under Communication Number 146, Order of Business today, they would like to ask permission from my colleague that the content of the Communication Number 146 is for City Health Board Resolution from '25, '26, '27, '28 to be tackled during an unassigned business for honorable discussion and approval.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Pabio that Communication 146, composed of City Health Board Resolutions '25, '26, '27, Taipo, and '28 be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. Should there be no objections? Can it take note, Mr. Secretary? Probably noted, Mr. Chair. A few minutes recess is declared.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And once again, may I have a good evening to my colleagues in the Sanguniang, to the ESP Support Staff, and all the guests. Again, I would like to seize this moment to extend my sincere congratulations and warmest greetings to our Local Youth Development Officer, Colonel Da Liggig, and the Office of the LYDO as being named one of the most outstanding Local Youth Development Office, a national award during the recently concluded prestigious 2025 Philippine Sanguniang Kabataan Awards. And for bringing pride and honor to the City of Mati and the entire youth sector, and this achievement is far more than just a single award. It is a powerful reflection of a collaborative effort across our entire youth sector and the local government unit. And this victory is a shining testament to a passion, dedication, and hard work that we put in our work and services. And to that, Mr. Chair, this manifestation as the Committee Chair on Youth and Sports Development would like to propose a resolution. A resolution acknowledging and extending the warmest congratulations to LYDO Colonel Da Liggig for being recognized as the most outstanding Local Youth Development Office at the prestigious 2025 Philippine Sanguniang Kabataan Award. And it is not part of our order of business. May I request that this be included in our order of business and be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules for its possible approval.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Sebelino that two, two proposed resolution, uh, one proposed resolution be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. Should there be no objections? Can it take note, Mr. Secretary? Probably noted, Mr. Chair.
Another resolution, Mr. Chair. This resolution formally supports and directs all Sanguniang Kabataan Chairpersons in the crucial task of crafting their 2026 annual budget and the annual barangay youth investment program, or the ABIP. The ABIP is the blueprint for our youth future, a commitment to a strategic, accountable, and impactful investment in their programs from education to health. And by passing this resolution today, we lend the full authority of this council to ensure every SK prepares a comprehensive, timely, and responsible financial plan, maximizing every peso dedicated to our youth. And to that, Mr. Chair, this manifestation again would like to propose a resolution as the Committee Chair on Youth and Sports Development. A resolution urging all Sanguniang Kabataan Chairpersons and councils to ensure the timely, meaningful, and strategic crafting of their respective annual barangay youth investment program, or the ABIP, and the annual budget for fiscal year 2026. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion, request by the Honorable Sebelino that a, another resolution be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. Should there be no objections? Can it take note, Mr. Secretary? Probably noted, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Honorable Pang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to all.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chair, this representation as the Chairman of the Committee on Finance, Budget, Appropriation Ways and Means, I would like to respectfully request to this August body for the following communication. First, Communication 141, 2025, SK Annual Budget of Barangay Cabo Aya. Number two, Communication 142, 2025, Pre- reviewed 2025 Annual Budget of Barangay Danau. And Supplemental Budget Number One of Barangays Badas and Mamali. Third, Communication 143, 2025, Pre- reviewed Supplemental Budget Number Two of Barangay Central. Fourth, Communication 145, 2025, Pre- reviewed Calendar Year 2025 Supplemental Budget Number One of Barangay Don Enrique Lopez to this city to be operative. Mr. Chair, I would like to request that this communication be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Pang that Communications 141, 2, 3, and 5 be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Probably noted, Mr. Chair. A few minutes recess is declared. Is resumed. Honorable Rabat Gaita.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have here Communication Number 130. This is, this was part of the regular, or second special session as part of the Order of Business during the second special session last October 14, 2025. If it's okay with this August body, I would like to request that this communication, again, Communication Number 130, Series of 2025, be tackled and discussed under unassigned business under suspended house rules, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Rabat Gaita that Communication 130 be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary. Do we have a copy of Communication 130? Nagproduksya, Vice. Please produce and give to the members. Na? Nagproduksya, Vice. Pa crowd siya kami, Vice. Thank you. Privilege or is still upon us. Are there any requests by the members? Honorable Campos.
Mr. Chair, since we had a short meeting and we started a little bit late, if it's okay with my colleagues in the 8th City Council, that we request the secretary to read only the communications and the referral because we have a lot of pending matters to discuss during the plenary. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Campos for the shortening of the reading of the communications and messages. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary. Probably noted, Mr. Chair. Thank you. If there are no, there are no other requests under privilege, or you may proceed to the next item.
For proposed ordinance, for first reading then, for proposed resolution, the manifestation of the Honorable Sebelino as presented to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Communications and messages. Communication Number 141, Series 2025, referred to the Honorable Pang, pertaining to Sanguniang Kabataan Annual Budget of Barangay Cabo Aya. Communication Number 142, Series 2025, referred to Chairman of Committee on Finance, Honorable Pang. This pertains to annual budget of Barangay Danau and Supplemental Budget Number 01 of Barangays Badas and Mamali. Communication Number 143, referred to the Honorable Pang. This pertains to pre-reviewed Calendar Year 2025 Supplemental Budget Number 02 Barangay Central to be operative. Communication Number 144, Series 2025, referred to the Honorable Topesto, Chairman of Committee on Cooperative and Livelihood, pertaining to re-accreditation of the Association of Mati Baywok Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association. Communication Number 145, referred to the Honorable Pang, Chairman of Committee on Finance. This pertains to the pre-reviewed Calendar Year 2025 Supplemental Budget Number 01 of Barangay Don Enrique Lopez to be operative. Communication Number 146, Series 2025, letter from Honorable Joel Mays Yalmario, our city mayor, pertaining to four City Health Board Resolutions. Resolutions Number 25, '26, '27, and 24, Discussion on unassigned business suspended house rules, referred to the Honorable Pabio. And Communication Number 147, referred to Honorable Topesto, Chairman of Committee on Agrarian Reform and Cooperative, pertaining to re-accreditation of the Association of Mati United, City of Mati United Vendors Association. That's all for communications, Mr. Chair. For Committee Report, Committee Report Number 25, Series 2025, by Committee on Transportation, by the Honorable Alcantara.
Honorable Alcantara is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to everyone. I believe that the, all the members of the City Council has the copy of the Committee Report Number 25-2025. This representation as the Chairman of Committee and Transportation, together with the whole composition of the committee, would like to pass and render the Committee Report Number 25-2025. The recommendation of this committee as stated in the Committee Report Number 2025, Number 25-2025, relative to the proposed passage of the Ordinance Number 651, Series of 2025, an ordinance amending by insertion, deletion of an article, 7, Section 50, 57, and 58 of the City Ordinance Number 585, Series of 2024, an ordinance adopting the Enterprise Code of the City of Mati, Dava Oriental. It is to conduct again another committee hearing to resolve some issues and concerns that were raised during the first committee hearing. With this, Mr. Chair, we, the, I move, and now move for the adoption of the Committee Report Number 20, Number 25-2025. I'd also move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Alcantara for the adoption of Committee Report Number 25, Series of 2025. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Dayang Hirang. Are there any discussions from members outside the committee? If there are none, Committee Report Number 25, Series of 2025 is hereby adopted. Please proceed to the next item.
Committee Report Number 26, by the Honorable Pang, Chairman of Committee on Finance.
Thank you. Honorable Pang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This representation as the Chairman of the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriation, I would like to render Committee Report Number 26, Series of 2025, regarding our local expenditure program for fiscal year 2026. The committee conducted an N-Bank Committee Hearing on October 27, 2025, at the City Council Session Hall, and has the honor to report it back to the honorable members of the City Council, its findings and recommendations. Mr. Chair, I would like to move for the adoption of the Committee Report Number 26, Series of 2025. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pang for the adoption of Committee Report Number 26, Series of 2025. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Valera. Hearing no objections, Committee Report Number 26 is hereby adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Please proceed to the next item.
For calendar business, no unfinished business. Business ready for second reading, no proposed resolution. We have one proposed ordinance, Appropriation Ordinance Number 04, Series 2025, Series of 2025, by the Honorable Pang.
Honorable Pang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is the product of Committee Report Number 26, 2025. This representation would like to pass appropriation ordinance Number 4, an ordinance authorizing the annual budget of the City of Mati, Province of Dava Oriental, for fiscal year 2026 in the total amount of 2 billion 251 million 262,044 pesos, and appropriating the necessary funds for the purpose.
Thank you. There is a, there is a motion by the Honorable Pang for the passage of appropriation ordinance Number 4, Series of 2025, for its second reading. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Campos and all the members. Hearing no objection, appropriation ordinance Number 4, Series of 2025, is approved on its second reading. Please proceed.
Mr. Chair, with the permission of the members of this August body, I would like to tackle this ordinance for its third and final reading under unassigned business under suspended house rules. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Pang that appropriation ordinance Number 4 be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. Should there be no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please proceed with the next item.
For, for unassigned business, subject for suspension of house rules.
Thank you. Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move that the house rules be suspended, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable.
Committee. And I also move that this August body be convened into a committee of the whole, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the suspension of house rules. At the same time, the conversion of this body into committee as a whole. Seconded by all, hearing no objections, house rules are suspended and we are converted into committee as a whole. Thank you. Honorable Anto Pesto is recognized. You may lump sum the discussions for both communications.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Now, the floor is open for any discussion regarding the Communication Number 144 and 14, all Series of 2025, for, for application of the re-accreditation of Mati Beok Tuda and City of Mati United Market Vendors Association.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the two communications presented by Honorable Anto Pesto. If there are no discussions, please proceed.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Now, I move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation regarding the proposed resolution. As presented, I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Anto Pesto for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for Communications 144 and 142. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Bardon. Hearing no objections, these motions are carried. Thank you. Honorable Bardon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that all members of the City Council has a copy of the said communication coming from Kadak. The floor now is open for the discussion for the pertaining, uh, this communication.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the communication from our Kadak. If there are none, please proceed, Honorable Bardon.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. In behalf of the Committee on Peace and Order, Public Safety, I move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation for communication coming from the City Anti-Drug Abuse Council. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Bardon for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Campos. Are there any discussions or objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Honorable Pabio is recognized.
Thank you again, Honorable Presiding Officer. Under Communication 146, we have a four City Health Board Resolution, 25, 26, 27, and 28, open for discussion.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the City Health Board Resolutions presented by Honorable Pabio. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
I move for the adoption of the City Health Board Resolution Number 25, 26, 27, 28, as a whole recommendation, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pabio for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said City Health Board Resolutions. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Anto Pesto. Hearing no objections, these motions are carried. Honorable Sebelino is recognized. He may lump sum the discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I, the floor is now open for any questions or queries regarding the two proposed resolution.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the proposed resolutions presented by Honorable Tomas. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
If none, I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation for the said two proposed resolution. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Sebelino for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said two proposed resolutions. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Masagnay. Hearing no objections, these motions are carried. Honorable Pang is recognized. He may lump sum the discussions for four communications.
Mr. Chair, the floor is now open for this, for discussion of Communication Number 141, 142, 143, and 145, Series of 2025, all barangay and SK annual budget, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the communications presented by Honorable Pang. If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in Communication Number 141, 142, 143, and 145, Series of 2025. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pang for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the four communications. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Bardon. Hearing no objections, these motions are carried. Thank you. Honorable Rabat Gaita is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have here Communication Number 130, Series of 2025. This pertains to the request of the Philippine Ports Authority for the endorsement of the proposed port zone delineation of Mati Port within the Puada Bay Protected Landscape and Seascape, and requesting for appropriate legislative action. And I have already provided this August, members of a copy of the communication coming from our local chief executive and attached also is the sample map of the Mati, Port of Mati, Dava Oriental, which was provided to the Committee of Environmental Protection by the DNR, DNR Region. And based as, as an additional discussion, Mr. Chair, and based on their information, this application is already in existence. But they just need to revive this application since there are new administrations. So, bag upod ang mga endorsement with the new, um, um, city mayor together with the provincial governor, Mr. Chair. If the floor is now open for any other discussions or further queries regarding the said communication, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding Communication 130, presented by Honorable Gaita. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. In behalf of the Committee on Environmental Protection, I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole, a recommendation. Communication Number 130, Series of 2025. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Rabat Gaita for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for Communication 130. Does any member second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Makaubos. Hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Campos is recognized. For the conversion of this body back into plenary.
Mr. Chair, I move that this August body be converted back into plenary, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the conversion of this body back into plenary. Seconded by all, hearing no objections, we are now back into plenary. Honorable Anto Pesto is recognized. You may lump sum the passage.
Thank you again and good afternoon. Now, I move for a resolution approving the application for the re-accreditation of Mati Beok Tricycle Operators Drivers Association and City of Mati United Market Vendors Association Incorporated. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Anto Pesto for a passage of resolution. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Makaubos. Hearing no objections, motion is carried. Honorable Bardon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for a passage of a resolution authorizing the conduct, to conduct the fourth quarter barangay anti-drug abuse council workshop to enhance the capacity and coordination of badak implementing anti-drug programs. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Bardon for a passage of resolution. Seconded by Honorable Valera. Hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Thank you. Honorable Pabio is recognized.
I move for the lump sum passage, passage for the product of Communication Number 46, Series of 2025. A resolution confirming the approval and adoption of Resolution Number 25, Series of 2025 of the City Health Board, City of Mati, Dava Oriental. A resolution approving the local investment plan for the health 2026, 2028, and the annual operational plan, AOP for 2026, 2027, and 2028, for the inclusion in the annual investment plan, AIP, for endorsing the same to the Sangunyang Kabataan for adoption. Second, a resolution, a resolution confirming the approval and adoption of Resolution Number 26, Series of 2025 of the City Health Board, City of Mati, Dava Oriental. A resolution approving the incentive sharing scheme for the healthcare workers from the health, maternity, and newborn care family planning package competition plan. Third, a resolution, a resolution confirming the approval and adoption of Resolution Number 27, Series of 2025 of the City Health Board, City of Mati, Dava Oriental. A resolution formally establishing the Mati primary care facility of the City of Mati in accordance with Republic Act Number 11223, otherwise known as the Universal Healthcare Act. The fourth resolution, a resolution confirming the approval and adoption of Resolution Number 28, Series of 2025, the City Health Board, City of Mati, Dava Oriental, a resolution expanding the membership to the City Health Board to include an indigenous people representative as regular members. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion, there are motions by the Honorable Pabio for passages of resolutions. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Campos. Hearing no objections, these motions are carried. Honorable Sebelino is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I now move for a lump sum passage of this two resolution. A resolution acknowledging and extending the warmest congratulations to LYDO, Carl Deligbig, for being recognized as one of the most outstanding local youth development office at the prestigious 2025 Philippine Sangunyang Kabataan Award, and also a resolution urging all Sangunyang Kabataan chairpersons and councils to ensure the timely, meaningful, and strategic crafting of their respective annual barangay youth investment program and annual budget for fiscal year 2026. I now move for his passage, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Sebelino for a passage of two resolutions. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Pabio. Hearing no objections, these motions are carried. Honorable Pang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have here six resolution, Mr. Chair, all related to barangay and SK annual budget. Mr. Chair, I now move for the passage and approval of the six resolution. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pang for a passage of six resolutions, all barangay or SK annual or supplemental budgets. Does any member second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Valera. Hearing no objections, these motions are carried. Honorable Rabat Gaita is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In behalf of the Committee on Environmental Protection, I now move for a passage of a resolution recommending the favorable endorsement, without objection, of the City Government of Mati, Dava Oriental, to the proposed port zone delineation plan of the Philippine Ports Authority for the Port of Mati located within the Puada Bay Protected Landscape and Seascape. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Rabat Gaita for a passage of resolution. Does any member second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Dayang Hirang. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Few minutes recess is declared. Item, Mr. Secretary.
For third and final reading, Mr. Chair, appropriation ordinance Number 04, Series of 2025, an ordinance authorizing the annual budget of the City of Mati, Province of Dava Oriental, for fiscal year 2026 in the total amount of 2 billion 251 million 262,044 pesos, and appropriating the necessary funds for the purpose.
Those in favor, kindly raise your hand. Kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
All members present voted for the measure, including the Honorable Alcantara. No objections, Mr. Chair.
Hence, City or appropriation ordinance Number 4, Series of 2025, is approved on its third and final reading. We are still under suspended house rules. Honorable Campos is recognized. Please make note ang wala nagpalakpak si Tomasog si Sena.
Mr. Chair, I move that the house rules be reinstated, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the reinstatement of house rules. Seconded by all the members, hearing no objections, the house rules are now reinstated. What's the next item, Mr. Secretary?
For announcement, Mr. Chair, a Thanksgiving mass tomorrow at 8:00 AM at the Cathedral San Nicolas de Toledo. Eight man ang. This information came from the Office of the Tourism.
Thank you. Thank you, SP Secretary. What's the word? 8:30, 8:00 AM?
8:30?
Ang nasa letter 8:30, ang nasa meditation, 8:00 AM. Pangutan nun na'to ang grabe magsimba. Honorable Dayang Hirang, what's the, what's the verdict? 8:30 AM tomorrow sa Cathedral. Sambukan mas, unta present kitang tanan. Other announcements?
Honorable Anto Pesto. Allow ng pagsambok, bays, at 4:00 PM at Mati Mayor Francisco G. Rabat Park and Beok.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, announcement is the Chairman of the Committee on Good Government and Ethics and Accountabilities. I would like to inform the City Council members that the hearing for the administrative case Number 02, Dash 2025, filed by Mr. Kenneth Lumente against Ponong barangay Rinato Lumente Senior, barangay kagawad Mel Ford Doltra, barangay secretary Leylanie Castillo, barangay staff Kimberly Malintad, and Ida Donato of barangay Caboaya. The hearing will be scheduled on November 12, 2025, Wednesday at 2:00 PM here in the Session Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Anto Pesto. Nag-agree na sila sa maong date, diba? November 12. Oh, and other, are there any other announcements? As agreed, as agreed during our meeting a while ago, if it is allowed to celebrate, our SP Christmas party will be on December 4 at 5:30 PM at Masao Beach View Beach and Resort. Thank you. Please proceed with the next item.
Last announcement, bays, the coordination meeting with the Committee Chair on Barangay Affairs on October 30, 9:00 AM at Office of the City Vice Mayor, together with the local finance committee members.
Thank you, Honorable, uh, thank you, Mr. Secretary. If there are no other announcements, let's proceed to the next item.
Adjournment followed by closing prayer by the Honorable Bardon.
Honorable Bardon is recognized.
I think there's, there is no other matters to be taken up. I move to adjourn our meeting.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Bardon for the adjournment of today's session. Seconded by all, session adjourned. Please rise for the closing prayer.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Loving Father, we thank you for guiding us throughout today's session. Thank you for the spirit of cooperation and understanding that enabled. that in, enabled us to feel, to fulfill our duties and sincerity and purpose. We continue to pray for your protection and blessings upon our city and our people. May your strength in our commitment to serve will humiliate humility, honesty, and dedication to the common good. As we conclude this gathering, grant us safe travels and renewed passion to uphold the values of public service. May our every actions reflect your light and love in the service of the fellow citizens. All these we ask, in Jesus' name, amen.